Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regular scheduled work session for City Council from July 6, 2021. It's 6:00 PM. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Bridge, Deputy, all the wonderful audience members. Ms. Berners, you can call and roll, please.
Sure. Mayor Lowry.
Here.
Councilman Grimm.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Angleton.
Here.
Councilwoman Okowski.
Here.
Councilman Cobb.
Here.
Councilman Rodwell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cook.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you very much. And tonight's, tonight's in what?
Ask her. She don't trust me with her lung, but.
Oh, okay. Tonight's invocation will be by Councilman Cobb.
Dear heaven Father, give us the guidance to do what's right for the citizens of this community. Watch over our military and their families, watch over our first responders, our fire EMS, and our deputies in town. In Jesus' name, pray amen.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to your beloved, what we're standing on, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Those are way better than the virtual ones. Way more insane. All right, moving on. Pledge, actions on the minutes. Uh, none. Communications, none. City manager report and regular session comments from members of the public, none. There's no one here. Committee reports, none. Resolutions, uh, ordinances will be done in regular session. Other business, legislation discussion, and I will hand it over to Mr. Bridge. Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, thank you. Well, thank you. It's a little less in your face today, you know? Sometimes you gotta reel it back a little bit.
Right.
You do. But anyway, yeah, thanks for everyone showing up, um, coming. Um, so legislation on tonight, and we have ordinance 21 dash 20. That was introduced on 6/21 of 2021. That is an ordinance amending ordinance 2020 dash 07 for the purpose of making the city iPad use policy effective. Passes to additional city board members and to correct your scribbler's error. Uh, that is basically to just say, hey, we now have some other boards that have iPads or planning board, board as an appeals. How it was awarded the first time is strictly for council. All we're doing is taking anything else that said councils and replacing that with general language that says boards to cover council, planning board, BZA, and anyone subsequent in the future. And the scribbler's error had to do with a numbering issue. So I think we, uh, we, uh, when we originally did the thing, we had left out that we had done a policy prior to that. So we're just moving that number backward. So that's the explanation of that one. Any discussion on that particular ordinance? We're good? Okay. The second ordinance up that was also introduced on 6/21 of 21, and it's up for public in hearing action tonight. That is an ordinance adopting the tax budget for the city of New Carlisle, Ohio, for fiscal year beginning January 1, 2022, and submitting the same to the auditor of Clark County, Ohio. Uh, what that does, it's the very first step in our budget, budgetary process. We take that tax budget, we work off the estimated resources that they give us earlier in the year. And basically what that tax budget is supposed to guide us, um, for our development of our capital improvement plan and also our, uh, 2022 operating budget. So again, just the first step in the overall budgetary process. Uh, we will go ahead and certify that, um, uh, after the meeting tonight, should it pass in regular session. Uh, any questions on that particular legislation piece?
Counselor?
No.
No?
No.
Awesome. And the ordinance, uh, 2021 dash 22, that is actually introduced tonight, will, uh, have a public hearing in action on that on 7/19 of 2021. That is an ordinance authorizing the registration of the New Carlisle Mayor's Court within Supreme Court of Ohio and other state government offices, and the filing of any related and necessary reports. Uh, that will give the authority to either myself, Jake, or Pauline to go ahead and register the court, I'm sorry, or Mr. Mayor, to, to register the court within state of Ohio to various different agencies, Ohio B and B, uh, Traffic Bureau, uh, BCI, et cetera. Uh, so that is another step in the overall goal of getting our mayor's court in. And then we were going to have actually a slew of other legislation that's going to be introduced to you guys, um, on that date that we actually did on this. Uh, any questions on that particular legislation?
I just had one. Is that, and I may have already asked you this, uh, you know, I made you deal with all this, all these amendments and resolutions and that. But has this been a, as far as the mayor's court, has it been, uh, like, uh, over, overwhelmed? I mean, you know, I know you get into a lot of detailed information and work a lot of times, but is this overwhelming as far as the, the high, you know, what importance it is as far as like registering it, things like that?
It's not overwhelming. It's been a great learning experience, to be honest with you. Um, it's, it's very intriguing how, how these municipalities do it. Um, so from that aspect of it, it's been, it's been enjoyable. We've had to, you know, have our attorneys help more so than any other legislation development, I think, in the past.
Right.
And then this Harris has actually stepped up a lot. A lot of her legislation pieces you'll see next week as far as fund allocation, what percent goes to where and stuff like that. But, I mean, it hasn't been too, too hateful. It's time consuming like anything else, but it hasn't been time consuming like, oh, I'm racking my head around it because I don't understand it.
Right.
Which is completely different than something complicated to that extent.
Okay. And then I just actually had another question pop up while you were speaking, so I don't know if this is too early to ask or not. Um, it probably is. So example, say we, we get the court going in and someone gets fined for, let's say, um, I'm trying to think of anything. Well, something fine. Would all fines, if fees go into one fund, or would it get broken up like with, if something was related to tall grass and things of that nature, would it go into like streets and, or, you know what I'm saying?
Yep, yep. That's stuff we're working on now on the backend, so you guys, you'll see that, you know? Uh, that's a very, very good question, actually, because we do have situations where one of our deputies pulls someone over, that ticketed, should, some of that should go back into the police fund.
Right.
Then you have, you know, if we go ticket someone for property abatement, you know, does that go, you know, equal split 50/50 in the planning and streets, if someone is doing the abatement? But that, that's the stuff we're finding, you know, and that's now that.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb?
Uh, how do I want to phrase this? You know, one thing, we need to start looking in if we're going to put something on the ballot for a pool.
That's the discussion you need to have with them, but I'm, I'm right there with you.
I mean, yeah, election year's coming up. We've got a deadline we're going to have to meet. And go from there.
Yeah, it's a good observation to think on council wants to do it. You'll have to let me know so I can get the legislation and stuff going to put it on the ballot. And what election year. So we do have, in 2022, we got two levies coming up, so council should be aware of that. If you wanted to space that potential bond issue out.
Police?
Uh, no, police is, I think, good for another, I think, three, four years. That, the one coming up in 2022 is our health levy.
Okay.
Uh, that one's crucial because we just, we wash that money and we receive the levy money and we, and we expend it right out to Clark County, find health district. So when I give you guys those reports about plumbing inspections, restaurant inspections, that's what you need to cover that. Um, that usually passes, no, no problem. It really, I think last year, I mean, last time around, it, it passed pretty heavy, but it was also the only ballot measure on. So the other one is the fire EMS renewal. You know, we passed that, put it on the ballot, and it passed in 18. It was good for five years. Um, so that's, that's, that will be a, uh, either a replacement if, if we need to add more money to it, or just a renewal. So it's a renewal, it's going to, it's going to get the same amount of, um, millage according to the, how the, you know, um, assess the value of the property taxes. Now, if it's a replacement, then we can go in and ask for more millage. That's, we still don't know everybody, but we're actually becoming the council with some, with some, um, I don't want to say issues in the fire department, but it's, it's getting kind of hard to kind of staff it the way it is with, because the whole, the whole nature of the, of the profession has changed greatly. It's lasted fifty years, following years not being able to be on there. Uh, some of our own codes limit how many hours they can have in a, in a pay period. And because we don't have people to staff it, it's either people get the extra hours and therefore we exceed, whether in our codes, just to provide coverage, or we leave a hole. I don't think our residents are worthy of leaving a hole in our, in our, in our firing EMS schedule, you know? So we'll become the council, we're going to work on some numbers to, um, increase that hourly average they can have. And then probably look at some other ways that we can maintain the level of service that our citizens are accustomed, accustomed to with our fire EMS.
I got one more, Ms. Hare. I'd like to thank Mr. Hensley for giving Mr. Property to shoot the fireworks off. I'd like to thank Mr. Grimm for, for helping and also supplying the music. Mr. Rodwell, I'd like to thank you for, you and your wife for picking up trash and also helping, along with Mr. Cook. I want to thank the parks.
Huh? He didn't get out of the car.
It was there, though. It was there.
Yeah, oh, he did. He got out and moved the banner.
He got out and got food.
Moral support is important.
There you go. Also, I want to thank Chief Trustee and the Fire Department, they've done a fine job. And I also want you to pass on to Chief Deckets. I don't think they were here, but they were tied up with their own firework.
Yeah, we both were.
Uh, and I want to thank the deputies. They've done a fine job getting traffic moving. Did I leave anybody out?
Mrs. Sexton.
Oh, Mrs. Sexton and Mrs. Uh.
Moat.
Uh, Moat, Mr. Bridge, at least he showed up and there wasn't no glare.
But it's funny, I know it is. I didn't hear it.
What'd he say?
There wasn't no glare.
It was nighttime.
He come up at night.
Night. I knew exactly what I was doing.
But, no, other than that, we had a real good fireworks. And I'm, I'm sorry, you wasn't there to see it.
I saw pictures.
But it, it really made it on Facebook. A lot of people talked about it.
It was a good show.
More than they did Evans. And also thank Pike. I forgot. Didn't Pike have brush trucks? All they did?
No, it was, um, it was Bethel Park brush trucks. I thought we ended up coming from the fire scene, thinking there was brush trucks up in Branson.
Whoever was involved, that, I didn't make it back that short.
Group ever.
We all thank you.
We want to thank all the people in the team. Everybody was well behaved and no issues, as I understand.
I think, I think we have one accident.
That was all it? That was just a private property crash? And they was all good?
I told you not to run out front of them.
I would like to leave as much trash as I thought there would. I think they're too small. Kitchen, garden, tents full.
Where was the bigger crowd? In the park or outside of the park?
Bigger crowd was, uh, either back over at Howard's and back in Brubaker.
We didn't have anybody in the park.
Really?
We blocked it off.
Oh, you closed it off?
Well, you couldn't park down on it, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
Did you, did you notice, though, did you guys think Main Street by the businesses were a little more crowded than normal? Because they kind of got elevated.
It's been two years.
Yeah.
So.
It's kind of, you're right.
Well, he was at Arrow Queen.
I was at Arrow Queen. It was busy.
Oh, this year it was busy? Good. Well, they kind of got a good seat, because, you know, because I was looking down where we were at, you kind of looked up and saw those because you kind of, once you cross Main Street, you go downhill to get to the park. So I think they had a great seat up on Main Street.
I know the barbecue man broke almost a thousand dollars in three hours.
Uh, he went through a lot of pounds.
And snow cone, they ran out of ice, had to go get more, because they have both state businesses.
Yeah, that's good. Well, I want to take an opportunity, if you don't mind, and thank someone, actually a body of people, and that's, that's council. I mean, you guys have really worked hard to bring this back to your citizens, and it's very well received. And I hear Mr. Cobb, Councilman Cobb, think individuals, but you guys as a group really need to sit back and thank yourselves for allowing that, for allowing that program to go on because it does bring great wonders to the city. So from your city manager who sees the benefits of that, we, we thank you because it's just a great benefit to the city.
I wasn't down there all day either.
Yeah, now I check.
And Mr. Bridge, I will take yours and pass it directly back to the citizens. Because obviously without them and the things that they pass, you know, our levies and our, you know, police, you know, we wouldn't have the funds to.
Absolutely.
They're the ones to pay for it, so. But, uh, yeah, I agree. I mean, it's, it's neat, you know, because before we were doing them, I'd never seen fireworks in New Carlisle. You always heard and seen the old pictures on Facebook of all the fireworks back in the, you know, whatever it was, the eighties or seventies. And now we get to, you know, create new memories for newer generations growing up and hopefully keeping their memories.
And it was incredible display, too.
And I judged the cannonball contest at three. The pool was great, looked awesome. April did a good job at that, with the crowds and all that stuff. I mean, it's just, it's just the ripple effect that one event has is, is gigantic. I mean, it, it truly, truly is. So I think everyone was there, had a great time, and that's the whole point of it.
The next year, the Great American Fireworks, huh?
Man, I'd like for that to happen. I only need council at least double that budget, if you don't mind. We get it going.
Good, good show. The great, I don't know if you've heard it, uh, Mr. Bridge, can I, can I give you the, can I mention you on this?
Absolutely.
Okay, he had an idea. You've seen the TV show, and I don't know if that's where you got it, the Great American, uh, Christmas Light Fight, where everybody can eat for the, he, he come up with the idea of the Great Amer-, or whatever you call it, the Great American Firework. Uh, you know, basically, two different companies going against each other.
End of town. Boom, boom.
Because I don't think I've ever seen.
North versus south. Five seventy, uh, north of Lake versus south of Lake.
The north versus south?
Mm-hmm. We're gonna have to reword that a little bit for the event, so you know, you see where I'm getting at. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. But yeah, it's a, it's a, it's an idea.
Well, you could split north and south, so that you have the east versus the west.
Well, I always remember there was an article in the paper when north, the south side of the lake, there were people arguing that north side of the lake always got the better street, or it was the south side of the lake that got the better streets versus the north side. That's what I was going for.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, I think that'd be a cool idea. And I don't know of any other city that does. Has it ever been done anywhere?
I don't know. I don't know if we'd be the first.
Be a good sales pitch for our city.
Yeah, it's gonna be harder for you to sell a pitch that gets two companies to go get you together, but, you know, we gotta start somewhere.
I know we'll, Chief Trustee, big thanks because it went a little bit longer. I don't, well, what'd he done?
Yeah, what did you do down there?
What's that?
What did you do down there? Didn't you get the show to go a little longer? With the fireworks?
It just had, he happened to have a little bit extra.
Oh, gotcha. Little extra?
Yeah, and he, he goes, we, we kind of loaded a little bit more, and it's like, works for me. Thanks for that approval. We appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
They're very good people. Work with them. They are. Hands down, very professional.
All right, um, Mr. Bridge, did you have anything else?
I'm good.
Counsel?
I, I'd like to take some time, if we can now, with all of us here together, in terms of thinking about how we plan for what we want the city to do instead of basically reacting to what happens. Thinking out and start planning to do something next year and a year after that, and a year after that, to get to some kind of a bigger goal. And I think, I think we, we had talked before about having a retreat. And, um, I'd like all of us to think of things that we would like to see happen in the city. I know when I came back, the woman in town who's making the T-shirts.
Water tower?
Yeah, with the water tower. She made me one that just said, raise the New Carlisle. Peggy's the only one in our family who can go reborn and raise. But I was thinking about it and my, my PhD is in local economics. And when I came back here, I thought it would be really great to be thinking about how we can promote business in town. I don't know. Some, some cities are using local currencies where you can, if you buy, some of them do it, if you buy stuff, you get credits towards buying local currency, and it can only be spent in town. And, you know, that might be one thing we could do, you know, do we want to, um, I don't know. What do we want to see happen in the town? Do we want to have some kind of a recreation person who would have programs during the summer at the parks? Just think about things that could happen, that we could make happen to make the city better. Plan and do.
Right. Anybody want to touch on that?
Are we, are we on tap for the coffee and donuts next Saturday? Do we need a notification in the papers?
I don't think we've done one last time. Did we do a legal answer to the coffee and donuts?
No, I think I did put it in there, though, on the bottom, that they will have coffee and donuts, just this past night.
We'll get it in.
We need everybody to hit Facebook hard. Does it all of your following?
It'll show up.
Knows it's happening and we encourage them to comment.
Oh, yeah, I wish they're all going to go. We need to do that for sure.
We'll get, we'll put it in.
Have more than four council.
We got it.
Can I put it in?
I'll add to this one.
I'll do.
Hold on for a second. We're gonna see if it might argue that Marty came out and put a little part of it.
I might have put, like, after, when I do the legal ads, I put, like, upcoming meetings and.
So since you, um, ten don-, ten dozen is fine, right? Doesn't, ten dozen donuts.
We had six dozen the last time, but I would imagine being downtown, farmer's market, we don't need more than that.
I was speaking of which, with the farmer's market move, you're not going to get traffic down by that way. So you might consider setting up a tent at the farmer's market, which is in CVS's parking lot.
Just get a sign in the corner that says, free Bill's Donuts this way. They'll show up.
You gotta buy more if you're gonna put a sign.
We'll have more down at our end than the farmer's market will.
That means we gotta hire extra deputies.
Right.
Yeah, we gotta hire a few extra.
No, they'll take all the donuts.
We know, we'll be.
You ain't gotta take that. You got the cut.
You know, Bill says good.
Huh? It's that one-on-one, so?
Do we want to bring anything up about that pool?
No, it's ten to one. Yeah. Oh, I see.
Okay, we briefly touched on the fact of the possibility of putting a bond issue or some type of a levy on for the pool in the upcoming election. Are you going to need a motion from council?
Oh, yeah.
So you want to do that in regular session?
As council all want to do that, you guys want to have another, another meeting on that? I mean, because there's a lot to it than just bond issue. I mean, you gotta tell me how much you're willing to spend. I mean, there's a lot that goes into that.
Yeah. Well, and, and I would assume that if council wants to do this, we're gonna have to get moving on it pretty quick.
Well, it depends on what election cycle you want it on. Do you want it on the first, like, November, this November election? I mean, I, I do want my honest opinion. That's really.
Yeah, we're too close.
It'd be kind of close, because we have to have everything done in at least three months before. And then honestly, I mean, we probably need to get another person down here to give you guys opinion if you're gonna build a new pool, sort of just one. And then really, council needs to really think about what election cycle you want it on. If it's at November 2021, every one of my brothers is going to be coming out the vote. Versus if it's an off-election, like, on a maybe, you'll have low, lower turnout, but.
So you're having to pay it over to 22.
That's wherever you guys want to move forward, but there's strategy when you put stuff on the ballot like that. I mean, there truly, there truly are.
Well, I was also thinking if you went November 2022, that would give you time, you have the time to investigate the possible funds of that grant. If, if there's anything there that would chip away or something, you know, I don't know how that would work at your guys' area.
I mean, it's gonna take some, it's gonna take some work. Council needs to, you know, set some guidelines, and we're gonna do some research. Um, I think 2022, it's somewhere, it would be appropriate, but again, like I said, we've got two other ballot measures going on, you know? So that's something you have to think about. You don't want to load three initiatives on one ballot because something's gonna fail.
But you also want to kind of make sure that you strike from the inside of the time contenders to.
True, yeah.
People are a little bit more, uh, willing to, to share a few more opinions. For this reverse. Yeah, I mean, I would assume you would, you, not necessarily you, you, uh, we, the city would have to probably start with, you know, Howie, I mean, kind of builder, and what kind of, if, I mean, I know he gave a Russell estimate on, I think, 1.2 to 1.5.
Well, that's just the pool. That's, that's on the assumption that we, I guess, put it in the same place. If we have to land acquisition, if we have to prep that land, if we want to move somewhere else.
Reconfigure?
Yeah, reconfigure. I mean, there's just a lot that goes into it. I would hate to be rushed to get it on for November 2021 because that's a lot of work to be done in a very short amount of time. And not enough time to come over. That too, because that one, we're gonna have to hit the ground on, you know, with the health levy, we can go and put a door flyer in, pretty much explains it. But if you're putting a bond measure on for that much, you're looking at multiple council meet and greets with the citizens, you know, pictures up on the board, people walking. I mean, it's, that, that, that's a process. It truly is. And I want to do it right and not rush it, because, I mean, how you guys sell it is how the citizens are going to internalize that, you know?
One of your bigger things on your plate right now is probably the mayor's court, right?
Uh, mayor.
I mean, I know you've got.
Yeah, mayor's court's a big one. We have the ARP funds coming up. We have to address. We have, um, if you, city manager report coming up next week, you guys will get your veteran banner policy. You're gonna get that refresh for proposal for the fixed assets. Um, we have, um, in August, we also have the certification to auditor for abatements. Um, and we have some other policies coming your guys, your, your way. So right now, to throw that on us would be a lot, to be honest with you. It truly would.
That's what I'm saying. Would your, would your plate be a little cleared up at the beginning of next year?
I think if you let us in January, where things start to slow down with all these big projects, that we'll have some room to breathe a little bit. And that's where we can probably start hammering down, you know, some, some ins and outs. If you just want my honest opinion. Even later on, like, November, I mean, right now, the summertime, we're just, we got a lot going on right now. All good stuff.
When are the union negotiations starting?
We are starting those probably at the end of next month. So that's another big ticket item. Thanks for reminding me. That's another big one.
All right. I had mentioned before about, uh, putting key council people on that negotiating committee. Is this something council wants to do, or is this?
You mean for us, not to negotiate, for us to sit in?
Right.
That's what he's saying, which is what we have done, I believe, in the past.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna work this time around. I think last time it went around, that it's bad practice. Didn't, didn't one of our attorneys give us an opinion on that?
I don't remember. Was that four or five years ago?
Yeah, because it's not gonna eliminate, the original thing was eliminate the middleman. Imagine, maybe going back and forth. If you have two people on here, you're not eliminating them. You're still coming back to council.
Right.
You know? Um, but I think, I think you'll be the first council in history to actually be part of negotiations, because that would go against the former kind of governments we have.
Well, if I remember right, you're, I mean, I know that if a conversation takes, if someone went in, one or two councilmen, they're not allowed to, you know, they're not allowed to put their two cents in, I think.
They couldn't even be at the negotiating table. They would have to sit and sit there. But if you do that, you'd probably want at least three, and then, but you're still gonna have to bring stuff back to discuss with resident council. So that, if it was like four in there, and you guys can make that decision, but then you're not bringing it back, you know, for the rest of the group to vote on. But then if you have more than three, then you gotta advertise it without the open, so that doesn't work.
I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, I, like, if just one or two, I mean, two at least, I think that'd be just an interesting to sit in on the cross.
I don't, I would, I mean, that's, that's, that would be unique, and that would probably be the first council to ever do that.
Didn't, I mean, I thought we.
Huber does it. Bailey does it.
Um, Huber council does not sit in.
Yes, it does.
I will, I'll look into that, but that's, um, that's almost unheard of.
But I don't think it's against the law or rules.
No, but it is a definite way to micromanage someone, in a way. So I'm not sure how the union feel about that. Again, it serves no point. You're not bypassing the back and forth, because you're still gonna have two people on, and you're still gonna have to come to council and talk about executive session. You're not bypassing any time. So really, what would be the point to have two council members on there if you have no authority and you really couldn't influence it?
I think it'd be just an interesting educational point to, to see how it's done. I mean, I know how it's done. I mean, I've sat there on the floor, but.
Because I had no, no desire to sit in.
Anything else, sir?
No, I'm good.
Cobb, Cobb?
Rodwell.
Do you guys want me to look into, if you can have four people there, you're still have to advertise it, so if someone in the citizens wants to come there. But if you do that, the only way to make it somewhat logical is to have those four people to act on behalf of council. So I can go back to you guys and be like, hey, this is what they're doing. Do you guys agree with this or not? But then you're still not, I just don't see how that works in, yeah, I don't know how that would work.
No, I don't, I would think you might want it for a season.
No, I would say two desires. I think I have that ordinance from one of my files.
My last time it went down is in 18.
It went down when even did a little back seven.
What order?
I only think, like, I only think it came to vote for council to admit it. I think it died for lack of motion.
It may have.
What was it?
What was it?
The, in 18, when this, when we tried it?
You mean a motion to?
Yes. Yes.
Have people go in?
Yeah, cause I'm the one, I think me and you were talking about it, and we thought, "Well, that would be a good idea," then we brought it to council, and then council even said in eighteen, "It's not really bypassing any time-saving issue," and then, it, the, I can't remember if it was Lynette or Jake, who said that's just uncustomary practices.
Had to have been Lynette.
Um, yeah, had to have been Lynette, you're right, because Jake could come on to like twenty, twenty. It was a lack of-
I just don't have the memory of you guys, though.
Mm-hmm. I think that's what it was.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Grimm? And Ms. Eggleston? Ms. Noakowski? Audience? Chief, hold on, Chief, do you have anyone? Is it a governor?
Well, if we've got some time, why don't we talk about when we could get together for some kind of a-
I think I brought it out, uh, last meeting, within the next thirty, sixty days, if I remember right.
What do you guys would like to do?
So, I've been working on stuff the past few weeks, and you guys will get some more information probably for the next meeting, when it comes to that, central locations, what we can do, but you guys still need to get your topics down, and what you wanna tackle. I mean, I can get this, I can get the venue, time and date, but I can't get your, you know, what you guys wanna do, and the point of that together, so.
I mean, one, one of the things that-
I mean, it's gotta be an open meeting, cause it's causing a hurry.
Right, one of the things that crossed my mind, has crossed my mind, is, would it be wise of us to divide the city into essentially four precincts, or three precincts, with that? I don't remember how many precincts are in town now for normal elections.
Five, four or five, cause there's one very small precinct, like, it's tiny.
That's gonna take a change, it's really hard to do.
Yeah, exactly, but you know where it is, I think it's a-
Right, I mean, but, having-
Pol- polling card, exactly.
Having, one, having precinct have an elected official, and then, the other one's at large, so that if people have an issue, they have a single person that they can go to and say, you know, "I'm interested in this," because I don't see any real easy access for citizens to approach council, other than standing up in here, you know, just having someone that they could go and say, "We've got this issue," and whatever, and, and-
At that point, I, I will have to say, for some reason, then I'm getting the call, because I had-
I didn't hear it.
A call over the weekend about Bell Manor, and maybe Mr. Free will, at that point, I'd also had several calls about the situation, and one of them, Benwick, just to name something else.
And our phone number, yeah.
Right.
He was like-
Uh, you know, the only, the only problem I have with that, again, if you have a person in the justice ward that they call, and that person chooses to ignore that, I would much rather have all seven of us on the situation, than you can call any one of the seven, if I drop the ball, they still can call on me, oh, man, oh, boy, nevermind, like, I am personally against the ward.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're pretty excessive, excessive, I mean, it's, it don't get much easier than this, I mean, you can find us anywhere on social media, email, I mean, I don't know how many people got my phone number, though, I have no idea how they got it.
I've got phone, uh, phone messages, emails, Facebook.
I mean, it's a good idea, if we were a larger city, but I think, you know, we're so, I mean, I don't, I mean, we're small, but, you know, we were a Dayton, or even, we're, we're, um, in access, or even Huber, uh, it would be difficult.
But it's big enough, you can imagine, galleries of ways to discourage people.
It's a, I, it's a great idea, I just think, it's a solution to, I don't think, a, a problem, but, I mean, it's, it's a big enough issue a citizen has, they're gonna reach out, whether it's here, or like, like Mike and Bill said, go-
Go find us, yeah.
Um, yes, trust me, go find us.
Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Grimm, when you set up the city website, everybody's phone number is on it, correct?
Yeah.
Council?
Mm-hmm.
So, there's a way for people to get a hold of everybody on the city website.
I, I was on there today, and I'd sure like to see everybody's biographies up there.
Is that mine?
Yeah, most of them don't have biographies up.
I'm starting to have a good smile.
Now you have no shoes.
I am.
Mr. Grimm?
Sorry?
Mr. Grimm?
So, uh, the council retreat, I think in regular session, what I'm gonna ask council to do is, is form a council retreat committee, where there's like, three of you, who's on there, that way, I don't have to go back, there's a way to go back. I mean, Emily, we were just kinda talking, I think, maybe a good spot to start with is, maybe the first meeting in August, all council members bring like, a list of top five things they wanna see, concerns of the city, how you want it to move forward, any policies you want us to look at, that we currently have, or maybe new ones, um, that way we can start getting down that agenda that you guys wanna do for the actual retreat.
I mean, I, I know when you say retreat, we say retreat, you have a retreat, I mean, it's still a work session, isn't it?
It's, this is the current, it's a, it's an active work session.
Okay.
With food.
With-
With food, oh.
Like, these things are all, this is not like, these are not like, a three or four hour event, these things are multiple day.
Right.
What I wanna do is find someone who's gonna come in and guide us, there's professionals out there that actually work with city councils, and work with administration, about how to make these things effective. If we're gonna do it, we're gonna spend the money, we might as well come out the other end with a policy that's gonna help us, council's vision, right now, we're working on a comp plan that was from twenty twelve, you know, so, you know, the whole point of these retreats is for council to get together as a whole, so you can, you know, develop the policies how you want it to move forward, uh, but, retreats is a fancy word, I think, I just really don't.
Is that something that we should do before, or after you hit the, uh, budget work sessions?
Budget's gonna have no impact on the retreat, I mean, there's nothing like, in the budget, that's gonna come of it, um, and the budgets, I mean, that's a work, a day or two of work sessions.
Right, so I don't know, depending on like, what ideas somebody may have, or if it's something that needs to be adjusted in the budget connection, you know, the next year, or whatever.
Yeah, well, we got that coming up relatively soon, so, I don't know if we'll have that timing, we can always amend the estimated resources, but, you know, I mean, this is, like I said, these retreats are, are very important, just to get everyone on the same page.
I think the, the retreat is basically sharing of ideas and direction for where the next four years might direct this city to go.
Well, that too, I'd like to see some aspect of this retreat, to have a professional come in to kinda help us, you know, get in the ins and outs of our form of government, and what's truly council's role, and what's my role, so there is no confusion with that department, so there could be multiple, multiple things this retreat could, could cover, you know, um, but then, that's ultimately your guys' decision, what you want on that agenda. Uh, we guys start thinking about budget, you know, how much, how much of a budget you wanna spend on this, do we have it here, and have someone else come in, do we go somewhere else, you know, so there's still a lot of rocks to be uncovered, with, with how you guys want it to set up.
What do you think, sir?
Well, I'm, I'm sitting here, I guess, knowing there are three of us up for elect, and I don't know where those three seats are gonna go, whether we're, we're going to be, uh, back in these seats, or whether there will be new people, I, I guess, I'm sitting here thinking, would it be apropos to wait until a new council was in place?
That's a very good idea, since you said that, yeah.
And if there's any change, and if there's any change in the charter, affect council?
Yeah, you're right, cause that's gonna be how it's coming to, so that's, that's a good point, you now strategize when you have that retreat, given what's coming up with the budget, given what's coming up with the new council, given what's coming up with charter review, you may wanna have all those things squared away, before you really get into that, you know, deciding how the city's gonna move forward, it's actually a really good observation on your behalf, because we don't wanna go and spend all this money, and then three new people come in and have it completely different.
Well, that's, that's what I'm looking at, again, being chief, I wonder, would it be better to put this into play late January, or early February, or next year?
Yeah, because then we can put a budget line item for, for the twenty twenty-two budget, I think that's a really good idea.
What kind of money you think we're talking about?
Depends on where we go, and who we bring in, it's really, you can spend a little bit on it, and you can have just, you guys get together and bounce your ideas around, and, but, to me, it, this is something that has such a lasting impact on the city for years to come, especially if there's any kind of policy development after, um, I don't, I don't know if I, you want, you want, you probably want someone, you want a moderator, you want someone to come in here and kinda help us and guide us along the way, um, but, if, yeah, I, I don't know, I don't wanna speculate, I, I truly don't.
Yeah, fair enough, true.
I mean, we can always get on a plane and go, like, way to the retreat, if you really wanna use the word retreat, you know, but, we're not gonna-
Well, I, I know Springfield had one just recently, I'm just, I can call-
Call them, yeah.
Dave Eavesdrop, and, and see what kind of bucks they've been doing on it.
See what they did.
Dave is a very good person, on the, uh, information coming from them, I think there's been several other cities in the area, I've looked on, who else, in the Dogland, uh, I think, before, maybe next meeting, we can get together, some of those people, and get some kind of a budget, put together.
Yep, so I think once we, you go back to regular sessions, if you guys wanna do the council, council retreat committee, would be a great place to start, get them, get whoever you want on it, and, work, start working it out.
All right, anything else? Scott?
My question, if you have all council together to retreat, that would come from public events.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, we'd, it'd be advertised, and I don't think a lot of citizens show up, but you at least have to market it as, I mean, and they-
It'd be aw, it'd be totally awesome if a lot of citizens did show up.
Well, yeah, well, that's something we have to take into account, when we look at the venues, you know, we can't just limit people to twenty seats, you know, we kinda have to keep it open to the public, that's why I think some of these people either go out somewhere, or have enough, big enough venue to do it, but, I think there's a lot of low-hanging fruit up there, that we can call around, Springfield, it's very common for these things to happen, that we can get information from other municipalities, how they handle it.
Another center?
Actually, they've got a room in there, you could rent.
What's the, uh, what's the place west of town?
Alaron, I'm already on it, Alaron, Alaron, or whatever it is, Alarion, Alaron?
Oh, look on Wildcat Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's a Gordon's facility, by the way. Gordon's, and they do those type of things, and that's, I'll be calling them, I suppose.
You know, we got one person, and Springfield will come down hard with this amount of information.
Man, my ear, right here, I can't hear out of this ear right now, I don't know what's going on.
He's stayed any names?
Up, right here.
Yeah, but you do have to open up to the public, and anyone can come.
All right, anyone else? Motion by Mr. Cobb, motion by Cobb, second by Mr. Grimm, to adjourn.
Cobb.
Councilman Eggleston?
Yes.
Councilman Noakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Cobb?
Yes.
Councilman Robald?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cook?
Yes.